Call to order the North Canton Special Planning Commission meeting. It is April twenty second, twenty twenty five at six P M here. Uh, the first item on the agenda is a roll call.
Mister Dopees?
Here.
Mister Milhousen?
Here.
Mister Sarah?
Here.
Mister Lepage?
Here.
Mister Reed?
Here.
Next on the agenda is minutes for consideration. This is submitting the March fifth, twenty twenty five meeting minutes for approval.
I make a motion to approve the March fifth meeting minutes.
One second then.
We have a motion from Mister Sarah and a second from Mister Milhousen. Call to vote, please.
Mister Reed?
Yes.
Mister Lepage?
Yes.
Mister Sarah?
Yes.
Mister Milhousen?
Yes.
Mister Dopees?
Yes. Alright, first on the agenda tonight is an adjudication hearing for application C U S E dash two five dash two. Uh, twelve ten North Main Street, North Canton. A conditional use permit to request to modify the existing double drive up lanes to allow two single drive up lanes. In accordance with the North Canton ordinance, eleven thirty six dot twelve subsection B for a new Domino's Pizza and additional food service tenant. Okay, at this time, if the applicant would like to step to the podium and uh, as a reminder for everybody here tonight, since we do see some new faces, if you would like to speak uh, at the requested time, please state your name and address and you're allowed three to five minutes to speak on any issues. Uh, so if you could sir, speak your name and address and then uh, take it away.
Good afternoon or good evening everyone. Uh, my name's Eric Soder. I'm with Domino's, with Domino's Pizza. Uh, address is Wilmer, Minnesota. Um, came to you guys to uh, talk to you about uh, property or address twelve ten, the old bank. What we would like to do is repurpose this existing building for a two tenant space. Uh, basically Domino's Pizza in the front half and an additional tenant to be named later uh, in the back half. Uh, we would like to redo the uh, exterior facade, basically a hundred percent putting nichia metals. Um, and uh, repaint some of the existing brick. And uh, the other thing we would like to do is repurpose one of the existing drive through. Currently, there's two drive through lanes on there. We would like to relocate one of those drive through lanes to the back half of the building for that secondary tenant, which would allow us to actually add uh, onto the building into that first pickup lane to give us some additional room for our kitchen space. Um, I do have to apologize. I did not know I was gonna be presenting until fifteen minutes ago, so I'm really, really winging this here. Uh, for the most part, I, if Martin here says that uh, you guys had reviewed plans and stuff and there was some additional questions. If there's any questions, I am more than willing to answer them. I just apologize. Um, like I said, very underprepared right now. Uh, it is, let me think here. Basically, we, yeah, in a nutshell, sorry, just repurpose the building, sorry.
Thank you. Um, at this time, Martin, would you like to speak from the city's perspective on this?
Yes.
Application?
Thank you Chairman. Uh, we have, we've been working with the design team and I apologize for the last minute notice there for the uh, presentation, but uh, uh, we have been working some, with some time with the design team on the project here. We, we have held a pre-application meeting. Again, with the design team, we have, you know, discussed the project. There were some uh, questions and clarifications that were uh, addressed in that pre-application meeting. Uh, as you know, the project is located in the Main Street North Gateway. Um, this would also benefit from a recent uh, ordinance amendment that permits two drive through lanes. Uh, this appears to have had the two drive through lanes prior to the requirement of a conditional use permit, but since we are relocating one of the drive through lanes, it does seem um, prudent to go ahead and get a conditional use for the uh, revised driveway configuration. Um, staff has reviewed the project and is recommending an approval on the conditional use permit and I'm happy to answer any questions as well.
Okay, thank you Mister Van Gundy. Um, Julie, if you could bring up page three, that might be the most help right now. Page three on the drawings, sorry. I'm not sure which page it is in the uh, document set, twenty-two maybe? Just so everyone can see the drive up lane configuration. Okay, any questions from commission members? Hopefully we got a chance to peer at this and uh, have any comments?
Purpose of the driveway easement through the office building location?
Are we referring to the building to the east?
Yes.
Yeah, uh, so that driveway easement, it current, there's currently an existing driveway easement in there, but it is, the end of the easement is about five feet off of that curb line of the building to the east. And so for us to maintain our twenty-four feet, that's why we wanted to shift that easement up to that curb line so we could still maintain our twenty-four foot uh, two-way traffic.
The, it shows a thirty-three.
Or thirty-three, sorry. We wanted to make it bigger for, because the concerns was for uh, garbage trucks, uh, fire department, ambulances, bigger vehicles.
To get access?
And I believe with our attorneys that easement is already been shifted.
Any other thoughts from commission members, comments?
So that's gonna be another entrance into the back of the property?
No, the, the back half of the pro, basically, we're gonna split the, the property east and west for two tenants. Uh, Domino's will be in the front half, up on the road on the west side, and the secondary tenant will be on the east side. Um, the, the good thing about with us owning the building, we can somewhat control who's gonna be on that east side. Uh, and what we'd like to do is, on similar properties that we have like this, is that we like to offset the hours of the high, high volume times of the peak uh, restaurant times. So, we have been in contact with a couple donut places or, you know, pastry places or anything to that fashion where their high rush is in the morning versus our high rushes in the afternoon evening.
Can you go to drawing A zero five twelve?
Yeah, I think it's uh, page thirteen, Julie in the packet.
There. So you see that easement going through the existing plaza?
Mm-hmm.
That was an already, that's an existing easement. That's already in play. That was part of, because there's, there was an exist, existing access easement for that back property through the west side of our property. And so basically, what we wanted to do, or what, yeah, what we wanted to do is just take the boundaries of that easement and shift it to the east another five feet to maintain our, our full uh, thirty feet or whatever we're putting on there. So no, there, there, there will be no access, I mean, no public size access from that easement into our property.
But that easement is on record?
Yes, that easement is on record because as far as I know, that is, people, basically, people go into that east property and needs to come through our property. And that's why that, that access easement was already there.
Thank you.
With, with the second business?
Yes.
Possible second business. There's stacking space for four vehicles for each businesses?
Yeah, because they're, they're not gonna be traditional drive throughs where you have an ordering kiosk and then you pull forward. Both the windows are gonna be pickup only windows?
Okay, pre-order.
Pre-order, yes, hundred percent.
You don't, you don't, has there been any study done as to whether, is there potential for more than four?
With us, we, we have, we have a hundred and fifty stores in our company and about thirty percent of them have pickup windows. Uh, three or max at any given time at our windows, even at your peak six thirty in the, you know, on Friday night. Um, we train our team members to basically, as we say, move the meat and get them through the window as fast as humanly possible. Uh, because we don't want people waiting so much. They're, they're on top of it right at that window and they grab and go, the standard wait time at a window is about a minute.
Okay, and you said you're gonna try to accommodate a, another business that would have sort of a breakfast?
Yes, to, we, a breakfast crowd, you know, basically in early morning, you know, early, early morning up until about two, three o'clock in the afternoon. Just to offset the entire traffic flow into the property. We don't want two dinner restaurants in there because that just creates a traffic nightmare.
Yeah, but that's, okay, that's, I mean, that's nothing we can control as far as whether that's the timing of the stack based on the type of restaurant that goes in the second tenant space or the second space?
No, but with us owning the building, we control who we lease to.
Sure.
And, and we don't wanna do anything that's gonna negatively impact our business at Domino's.
Okay.
Any other questions from commission members? Okay, at this time, I would open up to any questions, comments from the audience on this item. And if not, um, I would entertain a motion on this issue. Which is, just to repeat, this is for application C U S E dash two five dash two, twelve ten North Main Street. A conditional use permit request to modify the existing double drive up lanes to allow two single drive up lanes.
Make a motion to accept this presented.
Second.
We have a motion from Mister Lepage, second from Mister Sarah. Call to vote, please.
Mister Dopees?
Yes.
Mister Milhousen?
Yes.
Mister Sarah?
Yes.
Mister Lepage?
Yes.
Mister Reed?
Yes.
Okay, next on the agenda is the development review application. Number D P L N dash two five dash three. This is for the same property at twelve ten North Main Street, North Canton. Um, this is the development review for a conditional use application permit C U S E dash two five dash two to allow two single drive up lanes in accordance with North Canton ordinance seven, eleven seven four dot oh four B for a new Domino's Pizza and additional food service tenant. So we've already gotten the overview on this. I don't think we need you to have, give another, give another primer on it. We're good. Um, I would uh, just ask Martin, uh, if you could just go over from a development review perspective, since we just passed the conditional use. And uh, we'll take it from there.
Absolutely. Thank you Chairman. Uh, again, the project was uh, reviewed as part of the pre-application meeting. All of the city departments were invited to the meeting and had an opportunity to opine on the project. Again, aspects of the project were discussed and clarified. Any, any items that needed to be addressed have been addressed in the plans before you. Um, the staff's review finds that the plans do substantially comply with the North Canton zoning and again, recommend an approval.
Okay, thank you Mister Van Gundy. Gentlemen on the commission, any thoughts or comments? Okay, at this time, we would entertain any comments or questions from the public? Alright, if not, then I would entertain a motion on this development plan review. Uh, application number D P L N dash two five dash three.
I'll motion to approve application D P L M twenty-five dash three.
We have a second.
We have a motion from Mister Milhousen, second from Mister Reed. Call to vote, please.
Mister Lepage?
Yes.
Mister Sarah?
Yes.
Mister Milhousen?
Yes.
Mister Dopees?
Yes.
Mister Reed?
Yes.
Alright, next on the agenda, this is ordinance two six dash two zero two five, a community and economic development committee. This is an ordinance finalizing the annexation of one parcel owned by the city of North Canton located on Whipple Avenue Northwest, Wise Avenue Northwest by establishing the zoning of the parcels as general business B, which is G B B, and establishing the city council voting ward as Ward one. Okay. Are you presenting this item tonight?
Absolutely, I'd be happy to.
Great.
Uh, as you, as you know, this is coming from city council. This is finishing up the annexation as noted there. Um, the zoning that is recommended as part of this is the most similar to the Jackson Township zoning. And um, again, the staff's recommending an approval on this item as well.
Okay, thank you.
My pleasure.
Any questions from commission members on this parcel? If not, I would open up to the public for any questions or comments. Okay, if there's no further discussion, I would entertain a motion on this agenda item. Sorry, let me get back to the top and just state it again. This is for ordinance dash two, two zero dash two zero two five, finalizing the annexation of one parcel owned by the city of North Canton located on Whipple Avenue and Wise Avenue.
I'll motion to approve the application. Ordinance twenty-six dash twenty dash twenty-five.
He meant twenty-six. He said two zero.
Two zero or two six?
Two, two six dash two zero two five.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Attention to detail.
Okay, we have a motion from Mister Milhousen, a second from Mister Lepage. We'll call to vote.
Mister Reed?
Yes.
Mister Lepage?
Yes.
Mister Sarah?
Yes.
Mister Milhousen?
Yes.
Mister Dopees?
Yes. Okay, before we get to the next agenda item, unfortunately, I will have to recuse myself from this agenda item. So at this time, Mister Sarah?
Excuse.
Will be taking over the meeting. Hopefully he has excused me.
Okay, so the next item is the development review application number D P L N dash two five dash two. Located at five twenty-five Seventh Street Northeast. It's a development review for a new middle school and new traffic circulation in accordance with the North Canton ordinance eleven thirty-one point oh eight R P. Do we have a representative from the North Canton schools to present this? Please state your name and address.
I'm Jordan Lewis. I'm with Soul Ares Architecture, um, six six seven seven Frank Avenue Northwest, North Canton. Um, here's on behalf of the school, of the school district administration here as well.
Do you wanna just proceed and explain the new middle school?
Yeah, I'll give an overview. Um, Julie, if you mind, or Julie, how much control, rate control?
Yep.
Do you mind opening up that overall plan and then probably that thirty-two eight hundred would be easiest to explain it with? Thank you. Alright, so I'm sure most of you are probably aware, uh, the proposed middle school is gonna be situated in south of the existing Hoover High School building. Uh, if you don't mind panning down just a little bit on that view, or even zooming out maybe. Um, so that proposed middle school would be along Seventh Street. Um, it's a hundred and forty-four thousand square feet. Uh, two stories. It'll serve sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. Um, so that, you know, the location that is uh, currently on Fair Oaks, that's all coming over here to the high school. Um, about a thousand students, hundred and twenty-five staff members. Um, so how the elevation works there, this building is gonna sit uh, about three feet higher than the existing gymnasiums at Hoover High School. Um, two stories tall. It's about thirty-two feet tall, most of it, and then thirty-eight in a couple sections. Um, so it's stepped down a little bit from the, from the high school behind it. Um, so overall, that massing kinda steps up the hill a little bit. Um, kinda the biggest thing here, this diagram is showing the different traffic patterns that are being proposed with this. Uh, as you know, we're bringing, you know, the middle school population on campus, so a lot more parents are gonna be dropping off here than the high school. Um, so what is shown here, the red uh, kinda loops going through there, that is the Dogwood Pool parking lot. Um, so through an agreement with the, with the city, the middle school parents are gonna come in off of Dogwood and actually queue in that parking lot and then cross over that existing drive that's there. Now that heads back to the high school and then go into that new parking lot, um, where that red line is shown. So that allows about seventy-five cars to queue on site and gets those parents off of public streets, off Seventh Street and Dogwood. Um, just to step back a little bit, the main entry to the proposed middle school is gonna be on the west-hand side. Um, there's an event entry on the east side. And then basically, the way the plan kinda is broken up, a lot of the events, activities are gonna happen on the north side of that middle school. Um, and then academics on the south side towards Seventh Street. Uh, the yellow that's shown there, the, there's an existing east drive that goes up to the high school now to door one, and I think that's where most of the parents um, pick up and drop off at the high school. And the buses are currently on the north side. So that's gonna switch those, get that yellow um, line there represents bus traffic uh, for both the high school and the middle school. They're gonna both utilize that east drive. All bus traffic is gonna go on that southeast corner. Um, there'll be some vehi, vehicular gates that are installed close to the existing parking lots to keep any other traffic out of that area. And then the high school uh, traffic, um, specifically parent traffic, if you pan down a little bit to see that north side, Julie, that'd be helpful. Yep, thank you. Um, that's represented in the blue. So the existing entry, existing drive is off of Tenth Street. That's gonna be maintained. Um, and that's primarily where the parents and students are going to come in and drop off. And it's door twenty-two on the north side is gonna become the main entry for the high school. And then also with that, we're proposing a connection to Chapel Hill. Uh, so it'll create kind of a four-way stop on campus near the tennis courts up there. And that'll add an additional access point for the high school traffic specifically. Um, orange would be the high school student traffic. Um, so they're, you know, free to enter, free to go on Chapel Hill and Tenth Street. Um, but as you can kinda see, the idea is we're, we're trying to separate all those uses as much as possible, um, to minimize congestion on site. Um, so a traffic study was done and recommended doing that Chapel Hill connection. Um, I guess some other things to talk about to point out here, you know, we have some existing properties on the east on that southeast side that currently just have a track out from there. So, you know, we're looking at putting a bunch of landscape screening along that these property line. So, you know, picture arborvities kinda staggered and rose to uh, kinda block that view of the new building there. Um, and then other landscaping we're proposing trees along Seventh Street that'll kinda be similar to the look that you, look until you have at the primary intermediate school. Um, as well as replacing some of those oaks that'll come down during construction, kinda replicating that, that current drive that's there at the high school. Uh, overall, parking, most of the staff parking for the middle school is gonna park in the new lot west of that proposed middle school. Um, there's about a hundred and twenty-five spots there. Existing parking lot, uh, that is west of the, we'll call it the high school gym at this point, that's being maintained. Also will be staff parking. The bus loop will also double as event parking, which adds about, I think eighty to ninety parking spots um, for after, after-school events. Um, as well as maintaining the, the existing high school parking lots that are there. Uh, the Chapel Hill connection, proposing gates at the connection to Chapel Hill, the actual, you know, where we connect to the drive there, then at the four-way stop. Um, and those gates will be closed during non-school hours. So the idea is that's really helping relieve that traffic um, coming in and going out during the school day. And otherwise, they do not want that to be used as a cut through or anything for the school, so. Um, yeah, anything else, I guess, anything else we wanna talk about?
So on the Chapel Hill exit out and enter in, you said there's gonna be gates on both ends?
On both ends, correct, yes.
So by the tennis court?
If anyone needs an illustration.
Yeah, you can zoom into that if you want to, or that thirty-two eight oh one, let me also show, probably zoom into this is fine. Yeah, so as you might be aware too, uh, Stark Porches has a trail going through here, a Uber trail. Um, that currently kinda runs right through this space here. Uh, that's gonna be reworked obviously to make this road proposed connection happen. Um, so that would be on the north side of these gates to protect, you know, those patrons that are using that trail. We have a gate here and then a gate right here as well.
Will buses go through there?
No, buses will not be going through there, no.
So, so it's more just an overflow of getting the people out at at our busiest times?
Yeah, correct.
So like on the weekends or anything, it's gonna be closed?
I believe that's the plan to keep that closed for, yes.
The plan would be that they would be closed on the weekends because again, we're only gonna have the, the bus only area that's in the front would be open on weekends for events and that type of thing. That's only buses only during pickup and drop off. So because we're losing that space and that access, this will help us immediately during those times when the, when it's bus only. But during the weekends and during events, those buses, you know, have that, that side will be open as well, which will have ninety-seven parking spots available and so forth.
Correct if I'm wrong Tim, but I think even after the buses are gone for the day, that gate will open up and high school students that are there for after-school activities are also able to get out on Seventh Street as well, so.
So can you go to the east side of the property now? Across from where the uh, middle school will be? Can you zoom in a little bit there? At that drive? So explain, I mean, it looks like there's two drives there. So give a little bit explanation and explain how the buffer to the residence is gonna be.
Sure, um, so existing drive occurs right here. Um, for this being specifically for bus circulation, that curb cut actually has to move a little bit west, so it gets further away from that residential area. Uh, buses will come in and make this loop. Uh, they will drop off at the high school and the middle school. And there'll be marked spots for them to um, sit at the end of the day when kids are loading out. Uh, along the property line here, um, leaving a, you know, a, a good distance for mowers to go through there for the district to still mow behind that. There will be landscape beds, um, probably of rock and then arborvities and some other uh, shrubs and stuff in there. But basically, that's happening all along that uh, property line on the east side there.
You create kinda like a sound barrier buffer? Am I saying that right?
Um, kinda like, yeah, mostly visual, visual buffer, uh, but that will also offer some acoustical.
Does that actually represent the number of, I think you said, arborvitie?
Arborvitie, yeah.
That would be placed there for a landscape plant?
Pretty close to that, yeah. It's a lot of arborvitie.
Seems kinda, seems kinda sparse if I'm trying to.
Circles are trees, circles are trees. Circles are the trees.
Arborvities be to the east of that.
Yeah, so if you don't mind, go to their thirteen eight hundred.
Those are all replaced trees, trees that we're gonna add.
Do you have that, if you mind, click on that thirteen eight hundred actually, the next one over. And then if you zoom in here. So we'll have the, these represent oaks, those big ones. So those will kinda be staggered as well going up here. And then really, you know, these are probably ten to twelve foot wide beds. And then we'll have every six feet will be an arborvitie, then in between that, so three foot, you know, you're kinda blocking.
I'm better now.
Got it, alright.
Is it mounted at all or is it just gonna be?
It is not mounted, uh, more for storm water control. Um, so there's automatically, uh, there's already a kinda of a swell happening to get water um, towards the school side, right? So there's some existing basins and stuff they're, they're working with. Um, so to not cause any water going on to the neighbor's side. It's actually, um, comes over to the school.
And how far is the drive off the property line?
Uh, the second red line here represents a forty-foot setback. So that forty-foot setback will be used for the, for the buildings and outdoor activities. This one's a twenty-foot setback there. Um, so that drives forty feet. Pretty, very close to where it's currently at.
Okay, well, I'm gonna roll, let's go to the west side. And explain how that really works. And down south there.
Do you wanna see Dogwood Pool? Do you wanna go to the other one or?
Well, I think everyone knows Dogwood Pool is right there, but you have a connection with Dogwood Pool. Well, I think everyone knows Dogwood Pool's right there, but you have a connection with Dogwood Pool. And, and I understand you're gonna use Dogwood Pool with the agreement with the city for pickup, basically, drop-off pickup. So how does that all work? They're gonna be parking over there, or are they going and grab, uh, just explain it.
Yeah, so mostly just for queuing, like you said, for morning drop-off and afternoon pickup. Um, the, you know, the district, I think, will start with probably having an attendant down here, putting cones out, so, so when parents come in here, they will not be going, you know, this way to cut through, uh, that will stay open for staff and after that, you know, high-traffic time is over. Um, but basically they'll, they'll queue it off of, come off of Dogwood, queue within the pool there, parking lot. This is a new connection here, so they'll come straight across and basically all line up. Once you hit here, this becomes one-way traffic, um, in front of the school, so the drop-off point is basically here. Um, and then they'll exit, come back out, and exit back on the Dogwood. Um, not during those hours, this is open here, primarily staff, like I said. Uh, there will be some visitor parking for the middle school here, um, but this will remain open and pretty normal parking lot after, after hours, besides this being that one-way street there. And then also, you know, since we're down here, this right here is an emergency access drive, um, so it allows to have that connection across, um, without going back to Seventh Street, and then also gives a point for, um, you know, if they need to pull an ambulance up, need to pull a fire truck up or a squad car. This spot is out of the rest of the traffic.
So it's not gated?
It's not gated.
It'll always be open, then anyone could go through?
Yeah, it's got, um, kind of a break visually, so this'll be concrete here, obviously left, you've got enter signs, likewise for the other side, so it's gonna be downplayed as a vehicular access, less than width.
So my next question is, where do I park for the, uh, football games?
Where do you park around?
In that area.
In that area, probably the same spot then.
Okay.
When you have to walk across the grass, it'll be asphalt all the way down to Seventh Street. Yeah, this'll be a nice connection right here for you, I think, right?
Any other questions?
Cover.
Comments from the city?
Uh, thank you, yes, the project, of course, is located in the Parks and Institutional Zoning District. Schools are permitted by right in the Parks and Institutional District. Um, of course, before you is the development review, and a couple of things to note there is the zoning code gives us an option to either do the development review administratively or before you as we are tonight. Um, a couple of things to further note on that is, um, public notice is not required by the North Canton ordinance, but given the impact that it may have, changing the traffic patterns particularly, uh, we have opted to notice, um, not only send out notice as many of the residents have received, um, but we also enlarge that circle, normally it's two-hundred feet. We sent out notices to everyone within five-hundred feet. This was coordinated with the school, everyone agreed this was best for, uh, getting the word out and making sure that everyone had an opportunity to comment or ask questions of the project in the early phases of the project, so here we are tonight, um, with that opportunity. And, um, as far as the pre-application meeting, we did hold a pre-application meeting where all of the city departments were uh, invited, I believe all of them were present as well. Um, had presented questions as part of that, all of the comments were addressed, you know, through that process as well as the plans that you see before you. Um, staff, of course, has reviewed the plans and find that the plans do substantially comply with the North Canton zoning and recommend an approval.
Fire department?
Fire department was present at the pre-application meeting as well.
And they didn't have any comments?
Fire department always has comments, as does the building official, so I'm not throwing them under the bus, so. Um, the fire, the Ohio Fire Code and the Ohio Building Code are very complex, as can be the zoning code. Um, the schools and the, and the design team have been great partners to work with, asking the right questions and, and addressing those through the process, so. Um, I, I should also note that our city engineer has reviewed the traffic study and is also here to address any questions that there may be on the traffic impact study and perhaps, um, any of the new traffic patterns as part of that, and of course, I'm happy to answer any questions as well.
Mr. Sir, I've got one last question. The parking that's within the bus loop, is that, is that dedicated parking?
Within the bus loop, just event parking? Event parking, so, yeah, I think basketball games and, and school hours.
Okay, so during school hours, when the buses are dis- when the students are distrudging, buses are coming out, there's nobody blocked in on either side there?
Correct.
From, the bus is coming south on the plan? There's parking in the center of the parking area?
What about, I'm sorry, I missed your question, there's no cars parked there, yes, so during the school day, no, no, uh, vehicles.
The buses.
No, yes, so during the school day, no, no, uh, vehicles.
Otherwise, I think the parking, the parking study is really well organized.
Uh, can you talk about the traffic?
Yeah, absolutely, uh, we, the GPD had, had done the traffic engineering study, the traffic impact study. And I thought it was really well-done, the whole, so, we've just discussed, uh, the traffic pattern. And what you'll see in the north part of the campus with the students, the high school students that drive is really not gonna change, other than that additional ingress egress point from, from Chapel Hill. Uh, obviously, middle school kids aren't driving, so the thought of more kids coming and driving and, you know, high speeds, that's, you know, middle school kids aren't driving, so there's no parking at the south end for students. Uh, a couple of things that, that, outside this, the school site area is at Tenth Street and North Main, and also Seventh Street and North Main. Uh, both of those are signalized intersections, we do not have a, a left-turn lane at Seventh. But we do have a, a left-turn arrow in a phase, so what we'll do at both intersections, Tenth Street, we do have the, the turn lane, is at those AM and PM peaks, just at forty-five minutes or so, our traffic controllers will change the timing in there to allow a little more of that southbound left-turn movement onto Tenth, onto Seventh, to accommodate that, you know, AM and PM. We can do, do that for, you know, the half hour, forty-five minutes, and, and that's what the report had suggested, so no turn lane additions or drop rights or things that we needed to do, like on Charlotte, North Main for the, the PK two school. Uh, also, the other real change to the traffic would be at Seventh and Dogwood, which recommends that that be a three-way stop. Since the right now is just currently a stop for the, the southbound traffic on, on Dogwood. This way we'll have a three-way, so the east-west on Seventh stops, because with the parents coming in, parents leaving, and one goes, one stops, like, and can kinda keep the traffic flowing, if you didn't do that, you'd have a huge queue up Dogwood, you'd never get them out. And then eventually, when, when and if, uh, the EMS station two disappears, there would be room to actually add another lane on Dogwood southbound, so we'd have a right-turn lane for those wishing to go back west towards Main Street, or a left-turn lane, but still would be a three-way stop. That's kinda in a nutshell with the.
So we're not, the traffic report is not showing where we're really seeing any backup?
Nothing in, that would be where it's like a level of failure within traffic analysis, traffic ease, I guess, language, everything is given a latter grade, just like school. And for intersection to fail, it's at a level E or F, and we're not really seeing that with these changes that are implemented, so.
What about going to the east into that allotment?
Really don't anticipate the traffic issue there, there's not a lot of the traffic, I mean, obviously some will be going east towards Mark Court. But again, the students won't be able to access that, I doubt a student, you know, he's gonna, that student's gonna wanna get up to Tenth Street, so they're gonna come around a different way, approach from the north, 'cause I don't think they wanna get in the mess of the middle school parent pickup nor the buses coming in. So they'll concentrate, come around from the north, I would think. And, and, um, again, kind of a nice way to just separate the middle school and their dedicated traffic from the high school and their dedicated traffic, and then the buses all utilizing that east entrance.
I'm really not seeing much of an increase into Chapel Hill then.
Well, I mean, it's. Yeah, I mean, well, it'd be an, it, 'cause no one travels there now, 'cause it's not there, but I think with that added, I think it'll even further distribute that traffic that leaves from the north. And a lot of folks are gonna go west out Tenth Street to go south, but folks that live in north of Apple Grove, they may go out Hyacinth, they may go out, you know, Chatham. Or, or, but it kinda even further distributes those students leaving, that are going north.
Can you scroll down so we can see the north property or question?
Probably switched out other, uh.
And that's student parking in the center of that circle, correct?
Yeah.
So again, if I'm a student, my fastest means of escape is north, come down.
North or west?
It depends on where you're going, because if, if you go north, you're not, you don't wanna make a lefty and turn on Apple Grove most of the time, so if you're trying to get out to Main Street, you're probably gonna go down Tenth Street, as opposed to go up and take a lefty and turn on Apple Grove. Not that some might, yeah, some might do that, but I'm just saying as a, as a general rule.
Right now Chapel Hill is a dead one, right?
Correct, right now, yes.
Okay, at this time then, I'm going to open it up to the public. Uh, if you choose and would like to, uh, uh, talk about this, uh, please state your name and address. And we're going to, uh, limit it to up to five minutes.
Thank you, my name's Cliff Lee, I live at twenty-six twenty-six Hyacinth, I'm just on the north side of, across the creek, I'm in Plank Township, so I do appreciate North Canton Planning Commission giving me an opportunity to talk. I'm looking at the elevation drop, we're just gonna jump, someone just start from right there, coming out of Chapel Hill. Oh, I lost that. Did my time stop?
Is that the sign?
Yeah, there's the elevation drop.
Yeah, yeah, that's exactly what it looks like, by the way. At that proposed access coming right out between the tennis courts and right there, I'm not sure if you actually like walk that round, are you familiar with that area? Right now it's a wetland, and there's about a thirty-foot elevation drop within fifty feet, and if you're gonna go ahead and add, I don't know, twenty-five feet of asphalt wide, fifty feet, dropping about twenty-five feet, you're gonna add to the wetland, alright? Okay, now, now I'm gonna have a river coming off of the, the parking lot, so what were the plans for any kind of water coming down into the creek? To flood the creek that's in my backyard, and that's just one, I'm just, that's one of the things I wanted to consider. You talked about putting a gate, is the gate gonna be on the Chapel Hill side or from the parking lot side? There're gonna be two gates, and they're gonna be manned.
We have our.
Oh, I, I, I see the, the green light, everyone, I, I'd like to sit on my deck and watch what's going on. So, and not just gonna be during the beginning of school, once school starts about, what, eight o'clock into it, the gates get closed, or they don't get closed until the evening?
No, they will be closed till the, after, after the school day.
So it's all day?
All day.
So, so I know when someone made a comment about the exit, the students that are heading north, they take hole to Hyacinth, I'm gonna say one and maybe one hundred will make a left turn. The rest are rights, everybody else going, Chatham's going that way, so I'm not sure about that, I'm kinda con- concerned about that. The trap, the thing I'm concerned about is the traffic flow coming off of hole on the Hyacinth. Half of Hyacinth is the city, ha- you know, half is Plank Township, so I'm not sure who patrols that stop sign. So, I, I know that there was a sheriff's deputy there last Friday, when there wasn't school, watching the stop sign, so that was kinda, I'm not sure why he was there. But he sat there for a little bit of time, so maybe he was a part of that, uh, traffic flow study, I don't know. Um, but I'm concerned about that right now, alright, it's kinda like a highway right now, and I'm adding, I'm thinking of that, how's the Chapel Hill gonna go ahead and alleviate the traffic that's gonna go north and make a right anyways on Apple Grove, whether they come all the way out to Dogwood, hit hole, and then Hyacinth? So, I mean, why would you add that? And I guess it's probably for the route of egress, you wanna have more and more egress, I, I completely get that, and I understand that, to kinda get that flow going, because again, I have a, a back-deck seat of watching all the traffic, you know, in the afternoons and in the mornings as well. Uh, have you taken into consideration of the route of egress going into Sanctuary?
There is route of egress.
There is one, there, there's.
It's a, emergency traffic only.
So there is an egress, it's just, it's a limited.
It's for emergency traffic only, it's for, it's for the city to use, not for, for us to use, so we was with ballards up along that, so.
I saw that just recently added.
Just recently added, because obviously it wasn't being used.
It was, uh, yeah, I, I witnessed that too, you wouldn't know what's going on there, I'm, I'm the guy.
Yeah, so that's the city, yeah, yeah, so that's the city's, yeah, so that's the city's access for emergency.
Oh, okay, city, okay, I, I get it, okay, and I'm just kinda concerned about that, because again, you know, and I really do appreciate the time, I do. And, and, and I had an opportunity, and thank you so much for the letter, you didn't have to send me one, 'cause I think we're just about at that five-hundred foot, based on our, the property line and everything, so I appreciate that. And that, that's just kinda concerning, a lot of this, there's that water runoff, how's that's gonna go? Um, you know, and I, it, I just, it's already a wetland now, um, I'm looking at the drop, how's that gonna come into consideration with the, with the, uh, the architecture, how they're doing that, and if there's anything that's gonna kinda capture that a little bit?
Um, just to, I can pop a bit to that, so all this has to do with stormwater?
Yeah, they.
Yeah, so all the storm water would be moved by then, all the natural, yeah, even during construction, you see the silt fences.
Yeah, I had a conversation with Stark County about that, who really owns that creek and what can do to it, and, so, yeah, it, it was very enlightening, so I do appreciate it. But I'm just kinda concerned about that, um, does adding added access really help the traffic? Or, I mean, what does it do, and now that, if the buses aren't gonna be going through there, the students don't have to contend with the buses. By someone stopping all the students, buses go and then the kids go, right, and there's already, you know, some like, um, early departures now, you guys have done that and late arrivals, so you guys already had that implemented, and that's good to see that as well, so, we're just kinda concerned, it's like, you know, so, but. But I'm excited, thank you for the opportunity to let me speak, um, appreciate it.
Thank you. Jordan, are you really adding much to those wetlands with this?
No, I mean, just, so obviously you're adding the asphalt, which is, would be impervious, right? Um, but they're all handling that, um, with the stormwater management.
So the stormwater control along that Chapel Hill connection, so everything that's, since it's impervious, anything's collected on that connection is going to storm.
Yes, ma'am, state your name.
Hi, Christina, I'll stay, just stand here, 'cause I can't see what it's, but, um, Christina Wittenberger, I live at ten thirty Dogwood Avenue. I am the corner house, or the last house before, like, three houses from Hall Road. Um, my concern is the traffic, um, right now with Tenth Street, it changed from a four-way stop to a through two-way. Um, cars fly from the high school down Dogwood. In the mornings, like, parents dropping off and then leaving, it takes me a long time to get out of my driveway, to pull out of my driveway, because cars are coming from the north down Dogwood, and they're leaving the school drop, after drop-off, going that way, so without that four-way stop at Tenth Street, I don't have a chance to get out of my driveway until all of that traffic's pretty much gone, also the cars coming from the north to drop off, so that is my concern. I understand that Chapel Hill will be open. So that is my concern, I understand that Chapel Hill will be open, but still, now we're adding more coming from the north, coming in that way. Um, I just think that there has to be some type of change, either Tenth or put a, um, another four-way stop at Hall and Dogwood, just so the people on Dogwood, they can get out of their driveways. Because right now, I cannot, even with late arrival, if I leave later around the eight o'clock, I have to wait till ten after eight before I'm, I can even get out of my driveway because of, they fly, it's students and parents, they fly down Dogwood. And it's just, it's just so frustrating. Um, like, I've called a couple times, if, if students see me, if I hold my phone up, they think I'm filming them, they will slow down. But it's just, it's just a raceway, Dogwood's just a raceway, and adding more to it, I think we need a four-way stop at Tenth or Hall and Dogwood. That's all.
Rob, can you look into that?
Absolutely, we, I mean, we did do a four-way stop warrant at Tenth Street and Dogwood, uh, about two years ago, year and a half ago. And it did not warrant a four-way stop. Basically, a four-way stop, I don't want to use the word illegal, but unwarranted is the better term. So Dogwood had the lesser of the traffic, so Dogwood, uh, stops, Tenth Street does not. And the report, uh, didn't mention changing that at this time. We can always go back and take a look at any intersection in the area. And, you know, it doesn't cost much money to count traffic and see if a four-way is warranted. But, uh, we only put up four-way stops going forward where they're warranted. You know, use four-way stops for traffic calming or make people go slower, that's an enforcement issue.
My concern is, yes, you do a traffic study now, but we're adding a middle school.
Oh, no, we wouldn't do it after, we wouldn't do it after it was open, exactly for that reason, yeah, we would wait till we have the, the pattern in place.
So that four-way stop allowed enough breaks in between the cars for us to pull out of our driveway, yes? Thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
Could I, can I just say something, just for, part of our goal is to obviously get as much traffic out of the neighborhood as possible, right? And so Chapel Hill actually is fifteen hundred feet from Apple Grove to get to our property, if you come on Chapel Hill, it's gonna be twenty-five hundred to go from Apple Grove all the way down to Tenth Street. And so those twenty-three neighbors between Chapel Hill on Hall and then all the way down Dogwood, right where you live, are gonna see the biggest benefit of the northern traffic going in on Chapel Hill.
Well, I don't think that the middle schoolers will be using that Chapel Hill though, is my concern. Um, they will be coming down Dogwood, because that's where their entrance and drop-off and pickup is, is down there, so they will not be using that Chapel Hill.
Sure, there, there could be some, there will be some, but I, we don't, our middle school traffic is not even close to the number of cars that come in because of how many kids drive. You know, I mean, drive themselves to the high school, so the middle school traffic is significantly less than the high school traffic. To, just to encourage it, hopefully, we can get some of that alleviated, so.
Yes, ma'am, state your name and address.
I'm Cliff White, um, at twenty-six, twenty-six Hyacinth Drive. So, yeah, we have a, I see everything you see down at our end too, the, um, we've also had three daughters go through middle high school. Um, them driving, us driving them, band practices, you know, before and after school. So I anticipate one big problem, first of all, with Chapel Hill, with the gates at both ends, the one up by the tennis courts and the one at the end of Chapel Hill, um, the, before you get to the new driveway. Um, I know in the past, when I've had to take the girls to band practice, I would come up Dogwood and hole in there on Tenth Street to go take them around the high school. And when tennis prac, when tennis matches were going on, they would close those gates there. So I would have to circle back around and go back out and go back around the high school to take them. So when kids are going in and out of Chapel Hill, and then they're coming back on weekends or coming back for, you know, different activities, and even parents, and they're not gonna know that the gates are closed, and then they're gonna go down Chapel Hill and they're gonna be turning around in the neighbors' driveways there to get back up there onto Hole Road to continue up to the high school. Because that happened to me quite a few times, going into the parking lot at the high school, having those, those, um, gates at the tennis courts closed, so I had to circle back around. There's not gonna be a way for anybody to circle back around, they're gonna be going into Chapel Hill, they're gonna be like, oh no, the gate's closed. They're gonna be turning around in our, our neighbors' driveways, Mike's driveway. So that's one big problem that I, that I know is gonna happen. Um, also, down on Hole and Hyacinth Drive, it's a speedway, the kids just fly. I mean, it's even scary coming off of Apple Grove, coming down Hyacinth and going, continuing into where our house is, because the kids are not stopping at that stop sign, they just come down, driving north, you know, flying around, they're, make a left to go continue on to Hyacinth and go off to Apple Grove. And the kids do make laps on Apple Grove, like, they go there and make laps. So I just really feel like it's already unsafe right now without the middle school traffic. And there's lots of little kids that live on, there's, we have, our, our neighbors have little kids right there on Hyacinth and Hole, plus there's little kids all up and down that road. And I just can't even imagine with more traffic, um, you know, whether it's parents, the high school kids driving, it's a dangerous situation right now, it really is. And I know that if you had neighbors, if you sat with us, sit with Cliff in the mornings, that would come in the afternoon and watch the kids, you could sit there at the corner of, um, Dogwood and, of Tenth and Dogwood, um, it's, it's dangerous. So with the increased middle school traffic, it's gonna be more dangerous, unless there's different traffic patterns, unless there's lights, unless there's more police presence, and that's just, I mean, I'm really concerned. So I'm glad you did get the letter, you know, and we only heard from our neighbor that, about that driveway going in from the parking lot, you know, because we walk that all the time and we're, we're on that all the time, and it just, I mean, I just feel really bad for our neighbors on Chapel Hill and also where you live too, because you, you, you know, we all see it, so. Just, just safety is all we're asking. And the middle school is gonna be a lot more.
So, Tim, you know, as far as the, when the gates are open, I have just thrown out, could there be like a sign placed on the gate that would show so we don't have cars trying to go through and?
Sure. And I, and I, I've had that same similar experience with the tennis courts. The one thing I will tell you that's different is that the tennis courts, we only shut down on tennis matches, which you never know when that's gonna happen. So you get up there and then you're like, shoot, I have to turn around and go all the way around, these will be closed every night. And, and I'm not suggesting that it could never happen, what you described, because I, I, that, that would, I understand what she was describing. But it'll be an everyday thing that those will be closed. And so I think people will learn much quicker. Yeah, the tennis thing is a little bit different, because they're closed randomly based upon when we have a tennis match, uh, there, you know.
But it'd be a payment issue that.
Yeah.
A sign could be put right on the gate that holds the hours of that open.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Do I have to go to the podium?
Yes.
I can, if you want me to.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes, I just, it's kind of, it helps, can hear better about it.
My name's Karen Sari, I live at ten twenty-four Dogwood, I live right next to Christine there. And I also have lived there for forty years, so I have been witness to a lot of the traffic, um, from the high school. I have a couple of questions, one question, why did they consider putting middle school with the high school? Is there no other place in North Canton that would have fit, um, extra traffic and, and the conglomeration of students that's gonna increase in that area?
Well, I'm not sure that's a question for this evening, but if the school wants to answer it.
There, there were certainly a lot of considerations from curricular things and things that we bus kids back and forth between the two schools, now that we don't have to do. Um, there were, obviously, even from a traffic perspective and kids dropping off, you know, there will be a, a, there will be a fair number of middle school kids who will ride with their high school sibling now and get, and come there and so forth. So there are, there are academic, uh, reasons that, that made it beneficial for us as, as the school district. Um, location, yes, there, there are some positives to it being in that location in terms of all of our other, uh, athletic facilities, now we bus kids over to the middle school every day, but those things that we don't have to do now. So there was a lot of consideration to, and a lot of positives, more academically and extracurricular, uh, for having the middle school there. Not to mention the land and where we, where else we have land, and the, you know, the city, there's no place else that we had land.
And on the other side, on the east side, they couldn't go out that way towards the Sanctuary?
We could not, yeah, we did not feel, we did not have the space to go out that direction. And again, we would have had the same traffic coming back, coming through there, even if we put the building on the other side.
Well, you could have gone through Sanctuary and through Dogwood to, to ease that traffic.
Yeah.
I know those are more expensive houses for there.
Well, no, that's, yeah, that's not so much the issue, I, there's a lot of, a lot of pieces to that, to try and put, fit that building even out there, the building that we have.
And another thing is, why is Chapel Hill not getting any of the buses going that way?
All the buses are coming down to Seventh Street.
Right, why aren't any of them going down Chapel Hill? We have two at Newland. That's what? We have two in the, in the, about Newland.
She's saying, she's saying, I mean, to neighborhood crowds, they go pick up kids in Chapel Hill, yes, but they're not coming through the Chapel Hill entrance.
Right.
Because it's gonna be better for all traffic if all of the buses go in a single entrance. We had, otherwise, you have buses and cars mixing, and kids getting off buses and cars, that's not a good, that's a very dangerous thing once we get the drop-off.
Is there gonna be any soundproofing on Dogwood's side, on the west side of that high school, like, they talked about the trees, our, they had, and?
There's a big open grass field, I mean, between, nothing's changing up there about that, it's been in the last forty years.
Okay.
You know, I mean, in terms of the north side, I mean, we're not, we're not adding anything. I think the reason that there was some put on the east side is because they've looked at a grass field and now there's gonna be a big building, two-story building right there, and so we're trying to protect their view, because, so they don't have to just look at a building out their backyard.
So there'll still be like a slope going up to block some of that, um, view of the, the middle school? And the noise, extra noise from?
A slope from, from where you live?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that, that hill's not getting cut out, yeah, the hill's not getting cut out, so you won't see, I mean, you might, yeah, you, you may, you may barely see the top of the middle school over the hill. But you won't, the hill's not getting cut out.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any further questions? Anything from the city? Okay, so what does the commission want to do here? Is there a motion?
I move to approve the, for review application number DPLN dash two-five dash two.
Is there a second?
Mr. Mahelson?
Yes.
Mr. Sarah?
Yes.
Mr. LaPage?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Okay, so is there any other business before the, uh, commission? If there is none.
I'll motion to adjourn.
I'll second it. Thanks, everyone, for coming today.
Thanks for coming.